Keep it on the third grade. Hey, she has to do that for me.
For me.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
We've got our technology squared away hopefully and we're live at nine, or nine oh two. Welcome to the Marshall County Commission Work Session for December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Let's get started. Ms. Pullman, I believe you're up. Y'all come up to the podium, please. Thank you. Mind handing that to Clint there, please? Thank you. Go ahead. Wait, go ahead. Well, we appreciate what y'all do and ever since the early days of Jane McCready, the commission has worked with PALS. Thank you. Report update from Martin Covey Construction. Kelly, you're up. Laura. Kelly, would you mind pulling that mic up to you since there you go?
The major change order so far has been just the additional cameras in the building. So we've spent out about one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in change orders. And then we've got another about forty-five hundred in that haven't been approved yet that we're still negotiating with the contractor about. Most of this money will be coming out of the contingency. Actually, all of this so far is coming out of contingency. And we're still showing that we have four hundred, just under four hundred and ninety-five thousand left in the contingency funds. And that's where we're at.
Anyone any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to make sure that we once again announce garbage exemption requirements for two thousand twenty-five are from November the first through December the thirty-first. You would go, if your social security income only, go to the Marshall County Health Department, fill out their request there. Discuss approval to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule in accordance with the state of Alabama Code one dash three dash eight. We have not got a letter this year from the governor's office. No one has. All of these holidays that we currently give that she normally sends out is culledified in this statute, one dash three dash eight. So we're going to just adopt that statute. Discuss approval to add Good Friday as a Marshall County holiday. We've had requests over the years and I've heard this several times. I've talked to the judicial system. The presiding judge is all in favor. They're willing to do. If we adopt this, he will do an order for the state offices as well. If there were to be a trial, which is rare on a Friday, then they'll work with the sheriff to make sure the doors are covered. Any discussion on that? Discuss approval to give not essential Marshall County employees Christmas Eve off, closing a courthouse. The state has already, presiding judge has already issued an order. They're going to be shut down in the state offices. So we're saying we want to do the same. Any discussions on that? They're not giving New Year's Eve, no. District One, discuss approval of conveyance of access easement to Randy Wedgeworth and his successor in interest across the Church Pit property, partial twenty dash oh three dash oh six dash zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero eight dash zero zero zero.
Isn't that fun with all those zeros?
Sheriff, this would require, if you're familiar with this, giving the guy that owns the property next to the range, Church Pit slash Church Pit, just have to move the gate up just a little bit. Clint, you got anything on that?
So I have, when I emailed this out, I attached an aerial view of it. So the existing driveway is a driveway all the way out to, what is that, Alabama's?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine South. And so there's a long driveway that comes off Highway seventy-nine South. And then when you turn to go to the Church Pit, there's a gate right there next to that long driveway that touches seventy-nine South. This proposal would move that gate down the Church Pit Road a little piece and continue to walk it all to the public. But it would grant Mr. Wedgeworth access to his just over six acres, which is landlocked. And there is a, the road, the road that in question is in good shape. And the only thing that would have to be cut is just a very short piece off that existing driveway. So I drafted this up and have sent the aerial view to Brandon Allen, who's getting us a survey. So what you're approving today would be to approve this upon the survey being completed. And this is a request from Mr. Baseworth that has been vetted by Mr. Schumate. And he is in favor of it based on my recommendation. So I think that this can proceed in his absence, but it would require someone under the District One to make the motion for it.
All right. Engineering, discuss approval of Coal Hill Estates Phase Two located in District One.
Coal Estates is located on Gavin's Way. The Coal Estates Phase One was approved by the commission back in two thousand and nine. So this is Phase Two. We do need to amend the agenda here to reflect the name of the subdivision. It says Coal Hill Estates. Actually, the hill was a typo. So it should be Coal Estates Phase Two would be the name. On December the eighth, after having a discussion with Commissioner Ronnie Schumate, he directed me to meet with Jeremy Griggs out there. We also met with developer Matt McBride, their contractor. There was concerns with some water on Lindsey Lane and wanted us to evaluate the detention pond that was then approved back in two thousand and nine. So we did meet out there with them on December the eighth. Jeremy, you got any comments on that? It is working to what it was designed for. So, and that was in Phase One, but we did evaluate it since when we sent the letters out when Crystal did. They asked us to look at specific areas. So we did go out and look at those. But based on the evaluation with the help of Jeremy Griggs, the former from District One, we're going to recommend that this plat be approved.
I did talk to Ronnie. He said, go ahead, Michael. He said it was good. Go ahead and do this.
All right. Discuss approval of Fire Tower Village subdivision located in District Two.
The developer is Mr. Ben Sutton, who is with us today. For this, he has asked for a variance on the lot sizes. You know, our subdivision reg, say fifteen thousand square feet. Of the seven lots, he's presented to be approved. The largest is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven point one eight. And the smallest is fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one point three one square feet. He has submitted the application. He said that this was necessary due to a small drainage ditch that separates Lot Seven from the rest of the lots. The reason for the request. The Health Department has already evaluated these sites and has found no issues with the lot sizes. Assistant County Engineer Kevin Stubblefield discussed that with the Health Department. So based on that, the recommendation for this plat is for it to be approved with the variance being approved as well.
Any questions?
They need to add that with the variance to be just approved.
On the agenda, we would need to add with the variance being approved as well. On item number eight. Thank you for that.
No questions? Engineering, discuss approval of vendor to conduct asbestos, to conduct asbestos testing in the Council on Aging Building to be paid by the General Fund Ballot.
The chairman asked us to take estimates to have asbestos checked in the Council on Aging Building. TerraCon was one of the companies out of Birmingham. Theirs was three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars more contracting located across here. Four thirty-one here in Gunnersville, Alabama was forty-two hundred. Discussed it with Amy McElroy. She reviewed both of these since that is the building that she uses for Council on Aging. And she said the recommendation would be to go with the TerraCon, which is out of Birmingham.
How much?
About three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now that's just to do the testing to find out if we have asbestos. That does not include the remove.
Right.
That's just a test.
Right. Any questions? Seems like all the old villains that we start to do something with, we run into. So it'll be a while every time we start. Engineering, discuss approval to bid for one or more two thousand twenty-six two-wheel drive and four-wheel drive crew cab trucks and one or more two thousand twenty-six two-wheel and four-wheel SUVs. Explain this. We got to look at that, you know, every so often somebody needs a truck, now somebody needs a car. We certainly have the state bid to go with, but we also want to start doing this yearly, if approved, to get a bid out there. So we don't have to go through that process if we have an agency that needs a vehicle of either one, that we've got something already in place and locked in. That's really the kind of where we went with this.
Most of the time, the state bids take anywhere from sixty to ninety days.
To get a product.
To get them in.
Right.
They have to, most have to be built. So if you had time, you could buy it off the state bid. But if you was needing something tomorrow, then most of the time, if you have a bid in place, then you can reach out and go ahead and get a PO, get the purchase done.
And this gives us a broader selection to what the needs are.
How long do these bids go?
One year, is that correct?
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So we would need to do the bid again next year.
Right. Any other questions or statements?
I got a question. You've got GMC, is it the Chevrolet Ford or whatever?
It can, but we put in the language or equivalent. So you've got three different bid packets to count that.
Thank you.
All right. Discuss approval of application for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six better utilizing investments to leverage development, bill, grant, and selection of the vendor to draft the application. Michael, would you explain that?
We had two proposals. We took two proposals. One was, say that cow backer. Cowbuck Associates. And the reason we asked them for a proposal, Jason Harper said they had had great success with getting grants, federal grants done. And they'd got an eight million dollar grant. Was that for Madison? City of Huntsville? They had had great success in the information that we reviewed. We also got one from Simple Grants, who has done our last two. We discussed it with District Four Commissioner. And he, like I, go with the Simple Grants because it's quite a bit cheaper. It could be around fifty-two hundred up to eighty-three hundred. This is going to be round three. We have a video conference, a Zoom meeting tomorrow sometime around one o'clock or a little later with FHWA. Jason Harper will be in that Zoom meeting. Crystal will be in it. Myself will be in it. And FHWA is going to discuss with us our previous applications, what we submitted, things that we need to improve on to make our application, I guess, more presentable to the federal government for a approval for the Swayback Bridge. So the recommendation is a simple grant, continue to use them because it's already pretty much written except for fine tuning the corrections that FHWA wished for us to do.
Can I answer questions? All right. Discuss ways to reduce large amounts of overtime being used by departments. Commissioner?
Not that simple, what you're saying.
I know.
But you're welcome to come over, we'll sit down, go over our operations that we do. That way you can get a better feel of it.
Well, but I was just, you know, like I said, it's just, it just seems like a lot of, a lot of overtime. Maybe I don't know the whole gambit of what goes on over there. You know, we have days scheduled, we're your schedule.
I could say to come over, we'd be glad to show you that. A lot of times, we know we schedule, we have things come up, whether it's especially heavy core dock, we have doctor visits, pro bike, juvenile transport. All that happens. We only line up one person on the road. We got to call people in to cover our shifts. And that's just part of doing business. That's just part of it.
Well, that's, like I said.
Same in the jail. We generally work an overtime schedule in the jail because to make sure our shifts are complete, which we are, you know, down three or four a lot of times.
Yeah.
Like I said, you'll come over. We'd be glad to sit down and go over. That way you can understand, this is not abnormal for us this time of year to use this amount of overtime. Because I always slows down between June, I mean, after January, going into spring, it always slows down. And then overtime starts catching up. Plus, we get reimbursements for our safe streams. And some of those probably haven't even come in yet. I don't know if they all, they're usually thirty, sixty days behind. And that's generally twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a month that comes back into the budget that you may not be seeing right now.
Yeah.
So, but like I said, you'll come over. We'd be glad to sit down and go over operations. So you can get a better feel and understand, you know, how we do or what we do.
You can come over here and I'll sit down. I'm not going in.
I'll go there. But if you want to ask, you don't have to come over the same day. But now listen, all of our records are over there. All of our operations are over there. I'm not going to bring all that.
Like I said, if we, if we, if we can't.
You're welcome to come over.
If we can't do this, I mean, there's no use in me coming over. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the overtime and, you know, that's like we send people to training. When you send people to training.
Yeah. I train. I get my training.
I understand that. But when we send them to training, they're on overtime.
Overtime.
I just, I never was involved in nothing like that. Maybe, maybe we can't do nothing about that.
I think that's it. So, and I work, law court is totally different than running a district.
I, I, well, I know. I'm not referring to the district shops, but.
You said here, county departments. Now, that sheriff's office operates different than any county department, any other, any department.
Oh, I'm very much aware of that.
Come on over and let's see.
I'm very much aware of that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we can take that off.
Any other comments or questions? Number thirteen, discuss approval for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six direct support request. And let me say something about that as well. We, you have to, any entity that wants to be considered for direct support has to send us a letter for us to know about your entity. Tell us about who you are, what your needs are and why. And so the ones that we're going to talk about, and I'm going to call out to you, are ones that has sent letters in and has approached us for that direct support. The other thing that's always said every year by this commission, this, this, we're lucky enough to be able to do it another year. Next year we may not be. So it's not something that's guaranteed every year, but as much as we can, the commission enjoys doing that. I'm going to call out in this meeting, and we'll vote on the next meeting, the ones that we're going to this year. The Marshall County Coalition Against Domestic Violence, ten thousand dollars. PALS, five thousand dollars. Association of Retarded Citizens, ten thousand dollars. KODJA, eighty-five hundred. Home Shelter Home Place, twelve thousand. The Extension Service, thirty thousand. That's the four H program. Liberty Learning, twenty-five hundred. Disabled Veterans of America, twenty-five hundred. Neighborhood Bridges of Boaz, the Marshall County Homeless Ministry. Or, wait a minute, the Neighborhood Bridges is five thousand and the Homeless Ministries is fifteen thousand. That's rooming in. Veterans of Far Wars and ARAB, twenty-five hundred. Marshall County Christian Services, twenty thousand. Sleep in Heavenly Peace, five thousand. Shepherd's Cove, ten thousand. Child Advocacy Center, ten thousand. Veterans of Far War of Boaz, a thousand. Any comments or questions on these guys?
I got Veterans of Far Wars of ARAB, twenty-five. Better War of Boaz, thousand. That's all they requested.
And that's what they both requested, yeah. So that's, that's kind of what we want. And we can change if you want to add to. You can easily do it. Okay. All right. No other questions? Move on. Discuss approval in moving forward with alcohol license application as recommended by the Alcohol Review Committee and set a public hearing for the following locations. Dollar General Store number six thirty, sixty-three seventy-nine. Dollar General Store number fifteen, seven, two, nine. Dollar General, two, four, oh, nine, five. Dollar General Store, two, four, two, three, oh. And Dollar General Store, two, five, four, six, nine. And Dollar General Store, two, four, three, two, oh. That's basically all the countywide Dollar General Store. Any questions or comments?
I went and inspected all these the other day. All of them had requirements as far as their life safety.
Okay.
So they have all been inspected.
Did you do the one on seventy-nine nowhere?
They're not in there.
Okay, so it's to include all Dollar General?
Not all the Dollar General, just the general stores. All right, you said they'd been inspected and all the inspections come out okay.
Yes.
All right. Discuss approval of resolution agreeing to participate in the ACCA's Liability Self-Insurance Fund for calendar year two thousand twenty-seven through two thousand twenty-nine. This is just the fact that we will, we will continue to participate, but it doesn't have anything to do with dollars yet and what that's going to mean. Announce two-week advocate, never mind. This was going to be taken off. This was where we were going to advertise for the Alcohol Review Committee for District One appointment. Mr. Larry Shoder has agreed that he's not going to, he's going to stay with us. And we appreciate his expertise. And it makes it a lot easier for the board, I know, to keep Larry on another year. So we appreciate that, Larry. Yeah. You're going to continue on your second year. We appreciate that. So that comes off. Discuss approval to purchase four time clocks for thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. General Fund balance.
Yeah, well, District Three's had some issues with this time clock. But I'd like to go ahead and also get one for the ground before we're at the courthouse. Get one for the new revenue commissioners building, since we're about to have some employees in there. And also go ahead and have a spare because we do have them come, time clocks that just quit working on us every so often. And so this is good to have, but also we're going to have a jail here in another year, a year or two, and we can use that at the jails.
Any questions? Comments? Right. Discuss approval of payment request of Shelton Body Shop, four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Actually, can we explain that?
We just didn't have a purchase order. If it was a bypass.
It's the end of the year, so this is like a purchase.
Where's this funding coming?
It's coming from, what we say, insurance proceeds of two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. And the remaining balance is coming out of the sheriff's budget for twenty-five hundred.
All right. Discuss award and bid for one or more two thousand twenty-six Chevrolet Police Package Tahoe equipment with emergency equipment packages. You want to talk about both of those?
With your permission.
Yes, sir.
I'll do nineteen and twenty at the same time. We did open bids yesterday at two o'clock for the two thousand twenty-six Chevrolet Police Package on the Tahos. We're going to recommend that Donahue Chevrolet out of Fort Payne for a total price of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents be awarded the bid. They were the only bidder for the vehicle itself. We did have two bids for the equipment to go on it. One was from Dana Safety Supply from Fort Payne for seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And the second was from Donahue for nineteen thousand, seven hundred and five. And the second was from Donahoo for nineteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-two cents. We had a brief discussion, Ms. Jones and myself, with the sheriff this morning. And we're going to recommend that we award this to both of them, just in case he were to run into some situation with Dana Safety. I know they've done equipment supply before for the Tahos. But in case they were to run into one, then they could go to Plan B, which would be Donahoo, without having to come back to the commission for approval.
Both these are Fort Payne?
That's correct. They were the only two that bid. And the Dana Safety, they don't supply, bid on top of them, so they just...
Dana Safety don't do Donahoo's.
They got their own guy, then?
I'm not sure. I think, I think they got somebody in-house that does that.
Yeah, Donahoo has a subcontractor now.
Good question.
What's the difference in these Tahos for you than, say, if you can buy?
These are police package Tahos.
That's a pretty good price.
It is.
Yeah, it is. Just got a lot wired in. Pretty wired. Or wheel drives in most cases. But they are. We're good with that.
How many are you buying?
We're good. I think that's coming.
Go ahead.
Um, I think we're looking at to buy ten of them. The next agenda item is regarding that. And, and the mail that I calculated for ten of them, that's with Dana Safety, since that's the lowest point, and Donahoo would be six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. The reason we're doing ten this year is that we've had, we've got some, several vehicles that are much older in our fleet, and our maintenance costs have gone up significantly over the past year or two. So we're trying to hedge against that.
Yeah, we're trying to build our fleet up. We've got a lot of older vehicles, and our maintenance last year was a lot higher than previous year. So we feel like we can get and build it up each year more, when newer vehicles are covered under warranty and so forth, we'll be in better shape on our maintenance and on our fleet. And then that way, we can purge our backups and sell several of those, get them, get that money back into the replacement fund.
Um, we have some being, how, what is the oldest vehicle on the fleet?
It's a bit of Dodge Chargers. They were, I think they're 2016 or 17 models.
So they're, they're...
Yeah, well, we got some Crown Vics a little older than that. Yeah, two thousand fifteen Crown Vics, I know.
And they drive these daily. Now, this is these officers or these guards.
Yeah. And now, the Crown Vics are like, they're the standard. They're battle wagons. But, you know, at some point in time, we still need, we need to purge those, get those, get those sold.
Any additional questions or comments?
All this coming out of General Fund?
General Fund balance, yes, sir.
No other questions? Discuss approval to pay deputy coroner administrator's hours worked in September that exceeded twenty-four total hour max approval by the commission. You can explain that, Wes.
Oh, what this was, the commission approved to increase the administrative assistance for the deputy corners in October. However, these invoices came from September services, and they had already worked the forty hours per week prior to commission approval. So since this was before the commission approved in October, I want to have it on the agenda, because at the time, it was not approved. But the total cost is nine hundred and sixty dollars for the overage that was worked.
If it wasn't approved, we didn't have all that, we backed up, did we? We backed up? If it wasn't approved by the commission?
It was not retroactive.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. We can't, we can't go back.
That's why I had put this on the agenda, just because it was not approved. It's no different than if somebody, you know, like the one payment request we had, that we didn't get a purchase order first. You know, it wasn't approved through the, you know, the formal purchasing procedures. So we had it on the agenda. And this is the same thing. It just wasn't prior approved, so we've got on the agenda to get approved.
But this didn't go into effect to when? September or October? And they worked this in September?
That's correct.
So I don't see how we can pay this.
Got a claim question?
I'm sorry? Did you ask me one?
Number, what number is it?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
I think it's fine as long as it's...
We can go back and, can we go back and pay the...
It requires the commission to approve it, but if the commission votes to do that from there, it's not going to flag any audits or anything like that.
So it's...
Something that has been worked without...
Perfectly legal.
If you, if, if it were paid without commission approval, that approval, that would flag the audit. But if the commission votes to approve it, then it would be appropriate.
But we, we approved to start this in October. This, this work was done in September. Before we approved it.
And if you, if that's been done in October, it wouldn't be on the agenda by now, but for anybody to prove it, the public had already been approved. This is proving something that has not here before.
That, that is a true statement.
But perfectly legal to approve.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Discuss approval to purchase APX nine hundred radios at twelve hundred dollars each from General Fund balance. You want to explain this?
Yeah, so, speaking with Molarola, we purchased a couple radios recently. And they have some additional radios that threw a other, another sale that, with another county, that fell through. They have these radios sitting on the shelf, and they're offering them at a discounted rate at twelve hundred dollars right now. The radios are three years old. They do not, their brand's making new, but they've just been sitting on the shelf for three years. So the, there is no warranty with it. We'll guarantee them to work when we get them. But as far as a two-year warranty, like a standard radio comes with, there's not going to be. So these radios are about four, five thousand dollars a piece, if we were to just go out and buy a brand new one. And I thought with the price of them right now, to get ten of them to put in for our backups, so if we have a disaster or something big going on within the county, we've got additional radios to hand out to outside agencies coming in to help with different times. Because the problem is with this new digital system, if it's not programmed in their radio, it's not an easy task just to tell them to be able to program a frequency into their radios like the old VHF system was. So if we have a few on hand to make a cache of radios out of, we can hand those out. We've done it. We've got ten of them right now in a case that we maintain. And anytime that any of the agency, whether it's fire department, sheriff's office, anybody else calls, we can run them out there, and they have some additional radios for whatever's going on.
So we talking about you buying them and then signing them out to, say, district? I know...
Yes, sir. So we, we usually keep them in a case unless, now, if district needs some, we'll, we'll take them out there, whatever, but we keep them in the case, keep them charged. You know, during events like Hydro Fest and stuff like that are going on in our county, where we have outside agencies coming in, we can issue them out, and then they come back to us.
So are these better than the Molarolas?
They're Molarolas. They're just, APX nine hundred is just a model of them. But they come with a radio, a charger, and a shoulder mic.
So how many do they have?
There was around a hundred and fifty at the time, when I talked to them.
Are you going to ten?
I'd like to get ten if possible.
I like it. So what if I wanted to get three from my shop?
If y'all want to approve them, we'll get them, we'll order all of them at one time.
But I might get three new ones from my shop. So I could just do a PO.
So... Yeah, y'all just give me the PO, and I'll get them all ordered, and get them in and get them programmed.
Do we want to buy any out of the General Fund, or is this just going to be?
I'm going to buy them out.
I'm here.
I'm going to buy three of them.
So would y'all approve for ten for, out of the General Fund for EMA, as a cash radio? So if we need them, we've got some additional ones?
Then if the district shop wants some extras, we can just put, do them and get them.
All you got to do is give us a shout.
And I would assume if, if Friday County's already known about this other than us, I assume that...
Yeah, and you know, the volunteer departments, this is a good opportunity for them. They're, it's gone through their department, through their association. They're trying to find some funds to buy some of them too, because they don't have many. So this is another way for that, too.
Thank you. Next two or three items are y'all's, or you going to come up? Either you or whoever. Yeah, yeah. All right, number twenty-three, folks. Discuss approval to increase reappraisal budget by seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, to be funded by unspent revenues from fiscal year 2025. Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Silence prevails.
Amen.
This, uh, so this seven hundred, whatever, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, we approved this to y'all, the budget is going to take away from everyone.
No, sir. It's not taking away from anybody. The funds that you're moving are funds going back into our budget that you've already approved and were budgeted years before. They were just unspent revenues, unspent budgeted money. This is money that was rolled over from last year that you had already approved in that budget. The law allows us to do this. And y'all have already, Commissioner, y'all have already talked about this in the meetings about the building, that we were going to use these funds for the building. I mean, that was part of the agreement. That was one reason that y'all set it up like that, so we would be able to use these funds and not keep coming back to y'all for money.
This ain't coming with this.
It's not taking away.
We're not taking away from anybody. This is Revenue Commission money from the mapping and appraisal budget that's just being rolled back over into the budget to be spent. Yes, sir.
What it is, at the end of the year, any unspent, usually any unspent monies from the reappraisal plan has to be distributed back to all entities. But this one, you know, they're requesting to increase the budget by that amount, so that they could use these instead of sending it back to the entities.
Yeah, in the ten years that I've been here, we've only one year with the county in financial shape for us to give money back. So out of the last ten years, we've done this every year, except for that one year. And one year, we rolled money back into the budget to keep you guys from having to, to spend as much. But this is what we typically do from year to year.
In our meeting the other day, since it was a large amount outside after the original budget had been, Commissioner Johnson said he had talked to Adore about this, and they had agreed it was open.
Yes, sir.
You remember that conversation?
I do. We can't do any of this without Adore's approval. And they were aware, when we went into this building situation, where we would be, as, as I said, you guys were, and this was part of the, the plan, was to use this money for that. But Mr. Causey and, and Mr. Lawrence are both aware from Adore that this is what we're doing. But they can't do anything until you sign off on it, because that's just procedural.
They had been a conversation.
Yes, sir. This is really, just like I said, a procedural thing, where you guys have to approve it, and then Ashley and I have to send it for them, for their approval as well.
Any other comments or questions? Revenue Commission. Discuss approval to increase Revenue Commissioners' operating budget, which is separate from your reappraisal budget, by a hundred and five thousand, to be funded by unspent revenues in twenty-five. A little brief, like that is.
Uh, this is the operating budget on the Revenue Commission side. The other budget that we're discussing is the mapping and appraisal budget. This one does not require Adore's approval. This is just unspent monies out of the operating budget. It's the same principle. I don't remember all the conversations, but I know the commissioner had asked, we've got to have money for fencing, we've got to have money for the car dixes that we have here cannot be moved. They're too old to be moved. We had not planned, when we budgeted, to be removed completely from the courthouse. So we've got a lot of stuff to purchase, a lot of stuff to buy. We weren't even aware of how much our rollover money was going to be until Ashley got through, which was a few weeks ago. So we've been having to get purchase orders and move money around in our budget to, you guys asked for an appraisal for the building. We've had to do wiring. There's been just different things that's had to be done in the meantime. So we're needing to replenish some of those funds.
Got a clue.
Out of unspent monies from our budget from last year. Again, this is all Revenue Commission money that has not been spent in previous years. This is no new money, or this is nothing. We're not asking for anything.
And in the conversation, this is all, most of this is going to be used in place, but we're really not sure what all that is going to end up costing.
No, sir. I, I know, just this week, I had to reach out to Ashley, because we're having, we've had some wiring issues, extra lines that have to be ran. Farmers came up, they need some additional things done. So Dylan, bless his heart, has not even gotten there yet, so we don't really know. It's...
The internet.
Yes, sir. Service provider, yes, to link us back into the networking here. So it's, it's really just a wait and see, until we get there and get in, and see exactly what we're going to need.
So twenty-five, it's over budgeted by over eight hundred thousand dollars?
No, sir. We didn't over budget. Those were funds from twenty-five and the year before. We did move money for scanning and printing and binding, and some other things that we didn't get to take care of, because this came up where we were going to move. That's what it's going to be used for. There were some software purchases that were not allowed to be made during the budget year, because we didn't have the time to get that done, so...
Next year, because we do this every year, increase budget. Is there any way we could try to budget the entirety, you know, before we approve the budget in September, so that we don't have to come back and increase it?
I can say yes, but I don't know what's going to be happening in September, and we never know what our rollover's going to be until you get through. So, yes, we can't, hopefully, by this time next year, we'll be in the building, and we'll be in a better position to be able to budget exactly what we need, but...
Fewer unknowns.
Yeah. This year's a lot of un for scenes.
That's a, I mean, eight hundred thousand, that's a lot of un for scenes.
Well, like I said, this is not money that's been taken away. This is the Revenue Commissioner's money that he did not spend last year. We started this process in June, I believe, is when we first started having discussions about moving into the new building. And at that point in the meetings that, that were had, it was, hey, we'll use some of these funds for the building. So I think there's more planning than went into not spending those funds than we're, we're making it sound.